City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman John Batiste. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Nine zero.
Nine to nothing, we have a quorum. First is Mayor's Public Announcements. Alderman Nguyen, City Manager Bob Kowits and I met with the President of the CTA, Richard Rodriguez, and discussed the Purple Line. And we have no promises that it will be repaired, but we certainly discussed the possibility. And I think it was a productive meeting. Alderman Nguyen, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think it was a productive meeting.
All right. I have several proclamations, not all of which I'm going to read. April 2010 is Shawnee Davis Month. I read that at the celebration at Robert Crown. National Library Week 2010, and National Fair Housing Month in April. And April is Youth Employment Month are all proclamations that I have issued. I am going to read two. The first is Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business, beautify our community, and wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Evanston, Illinois has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the last Friday of April of each year of the term of my office as Arbor Day in the City of Evanston, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry program, to participate in activities in the week following Arbor Day, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Paul, I think I'm supposed to give this to you.
In my script. For the Department of Forestry.
Healthy Kids Day. Whereas the Magaw YMCA supports opportunities for a healthy lifestyle for all the citizens of Evanston. And whereas the health and well-being of our children is paramount. And whereas we know that sedentary lifestyles among our youth is an issue that must be addressed on a national scale. And whereas the YMCA movement has undertaken a national initiative called Activate America to provide solutions to this problem across the country. And whereas the Magaw YMCA is partnering with Evanston organizations, institutions, and individuals to make real the goals of Activate America in Evanston. And whereas the YMCA in Evanston is celebrating 125 years of promoting physical activity among the youth of our community. And whereas the community of Evanston is invited to the Magaw YMCA on Saturday, April 17th, to mark the celebration of Healthy Kids Day with a morning of physical activity for all the family. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th to 17th, 2010, as Healthy Kids Week in the City of Evanston, and encourage all citizens to participate in the family activities of April 17th. Would the family from the Y please come up and get the proclamation? Okay, guys, come over here, you gotta go. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, good evening. We have a couple of items for you this evening. First of all, I'd like to call up Suzette Robinson. As many of you know, Suzette recently has been appointed the Director of Public Works for the City of Evanston. Suzette has a master science. Suzette has a master science degree from Indiana Welsleyan University in Management, a bachelor of science degree in physics from Illinois State University. Prior to her appointment as Director of Public Works, she served as Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation for the City of Evanston since 2006. Prior to her service in the City of Evanston, Suzette worked for the City of Indianapolis as a operations manager, facilities maintenance manager, for the City of Detroit, in their airport department, and with the City of Indianapolis for the Indianapolis Airport Authority. Also, since 1986, Suzette has been a member of the United States Naval Reserve and currently holds the rank of Commander. So Commander Robinson, congratulations once again on your appointment as Director of Public Works. And now that we have buttered you up, we've asked you to come up to talk about
Yard waste.
A very timely and interesting topic in the community, yard waste and street sweeping issues. So if you could give the Council an update as to where we stand on those issues.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to give you an update. What I place before you is Streets and Sanitation FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm going to go through some key ones based on the primary questions we received over the last couple of weeks with the changes that we've made. First, I wanted to give you some summary information. Since we made the changes to date, we have had 973 requests to downsize to the 65-gallon cart. We had 272 yard waste carts purchased, and we have sold just under 20,000 stickers. So it looks like that the information is getting out. We've been flooded with phone calls and requests and cart orders on a daily basis. So what we're doing, because we handed out the flyers a few days before everything went into effect, anybody that requests the smaller cart, even if they don't physically have it, as long as we have their request by Friday, they will not be charged the higher rate. So once we get the request, they automatically go in the system, but it's going to take us a while to get all the carts distributed. The first page, one of the main, I guess, questions or source of confusion was the online map for street sweeping. We had a color-coded map, and then we had a spreadsheet that went out as a part of the flyer, and the two really didn't match. So we have made that change, and we've updated it so now that there's a color-coded spreadsheet that goes with the map. So it should be much easier to follow. So that was really a huge question that we received in terms of the residents that had concerns about trying to understand what the map meant. On the next page, under the garbage section, I want to go over again what the charges are. And one of the things I wanted to point out in particular, that the city for several years has had a sanitation service charge. This is not a new fee. And the fee shows up, the water bills come out on a bimonthly basis. So the sanitation service charge shows up for a single-family home is $13.90, which is 6.95 times two. So everybody has been paying that amount. And the only change this year is we're doing a per-unit, per-cart size fee. So it's based on the number of units and the size of your cart. So if you have the 95-gallon container, which is the cart that you already had, you will be paying $19.95 per household unit per month. If you would like to request a smaller 65-gallon container, you can, and you pay the exact same amount, which is the 6.95 that you're currently paying. The next, if you go to the next page, the other question that we receive a lot is if people are responsible for fly dumps on their property. And the short answer is yes, that you're responsible for a material that's left on your private property. We will, however, at your request, will inspect the fly dump to see if we could ascertain its origin. And believe it or not, we can actually tell whether it's a fly dump or not because of how it looks. We have gone out, we have had people that indicated that they have had fly dumps. And we go and we look in the garbage and we find the mail that belongs to the house that indicated it was a fly dump. So the special pickup charge typically applies to what we find. So if the material came off the house that's red and pink, and it's red and pink, you know, some things are very logical, we do that. The fly dumps in Evanston tend to happen on private property or unattended city property, and people kind of know where those are. So we really have done a better job in terms of stickering the special pickups as soon as we see them. And so that really has reduced the number of fly dumps that we deal with. Now, that was for garbage, just so you know. That's a little different when we get to yard waste. The other question that we received a lot is, is there a special charge for recycling? And the answer is no, that's incorporated as a part of the sanitation service charge. It offsets the cost of both recycling and refuse. There's a red sticker on my recycling container, what does this mean? The red sticker means you have garbage in your recycling container. And it has to be quite a bit of garbage for them to put a red sticker on it, and the recycling company will not collect it. And as a result, you have, you know, one collection cycle to mitigate the recycling container and remove the garbage, or you will pay the special pickup fee of $25 for us to come out and empty your recycling bin that you've turned into a garbage can. The yard waste. Where can I buy stickers? Currently, stickers can be purchased at the Dominics, Jules, and Whole Foods within Evanston, LaMoy Hardware, the Chalet that's located in Willmette, Home Depot, and the City Collector's Office. Another question that we receive a lot, I purchase stickers and they do not stick, what do I do? We ask that. We've done a variety of tests in the field, and we find that the stickers do actually stick, but in some cases, immediately, they can be peeled off almost completely. So we do have some solutions for that. You can put tape or staple them to the bags. And what we do is if we observe the drivers, we're going to be very lenient with regards to, if it looks like you had stickers and somebody tore them off, and you know, there's remnants, we're going to pick up the yard waste. If there are stickers, because they fell off, that are on the ground, we're going to pick up the yard waste. If you observe, if you knew you put stickers on there and you come back and they're gone, we're just going to ask that, you know, if you bought the stickers and you call us and you show us the receipt, we're going to pick up your yard waste. And the next point is if somebody dumps, fly dumps yard waste on your property, and are you responsible for its removal? And the answer to that is not necessarily. We're going to ask you to call the office. And once again, we're going to inspect, because if you end up with the situation where the landscaper, you know, neatly stacked, you know, 26 bags of yard waste, you know, on your property, if it's not yours, you know who it belongs to. Meaning that we can come out and physically look at, you know, this yard is still covered with leaves and from the fall, and this house is not, and this house is neatly manicured, they're going to get the bill. So we're going to use logic, but if we cannot, if we cannot discern, we're not going to charge people. So. And then the last thing that we had, we are putting orange stickers. So if you don't have a yard waste, if you don't have a sticker, the pink sticker on your yard waste bag, we use our standard orange sticker, which says your items aren't collected. There are boxes on there, and it tells you what's wrong with your debris and why we didn't collect it. If it's a special pickup, it'll, you check that box. If it's garbage in the recycling bin, that box will be checked, or if you don't have stickers on your bags. So that really covers the majority of the questions that we have. We're going to post the entire document online so that, by question, so people can have that available to answer any questions that they may have. So I'll be happy to answer any that you have.
Is it possible to have the stickers at the Levy Center?
Doug said yes, so yes.
Thank you. Are we, in fact, I know we have stickers now, are we working toward a system where we could have pre-printed bags? Or are these vendors not willing to work with us like that?
Well, the stickers cost about 15 cents to make. It would be, we'd have to look at the cost, but we are going to look at that for next year, the cost benefit associated with switching to the pre-printed bags with the logos on them.
And the other thing I think it's important to get across is the people who do choose to scale down to a 65-gallon refuse container, if they put another bag of garbage beside it, there is a $25 fee for that bag, is that correct?
That is correct. They will be charged a special pickup fee. And what happens is if after, if they do it on a consistent basis, then we're just going to upgrade them back to the larger container. But yes.
I think that could be a bit of a shock, since the bill comes every two months, you could rack up a few fees. Thank you.
Yes.
I think it needs to be really highlighted in our message.
That is one of the questions, I didn't read it, but that was on there.
Alderman Sean Batiste.
Did you say that there's a deadline for downsizing to a smaller cart?
Oh, you can downsize, you can downsize at any time. But, but.
And you'll be charged for the month?
That's correct, that's correct.
So if you do it by, I mean.
If you do it by this Friday, because the water bill goes out May 1st, so we have to get all that information in. So if you do it by this Friday, then, and that's the request, then you will be able to, you will not be charged for the month.
If you do it by a certain date in the month, can you identify that? Is it by the 10th, by the 15th, or what?
You mean the date for this month?
If someone doesn't do it this Friday, but next month.
Oh, the water bill comes out every two months, so that's the cycle that we're following. So by the 15th, by the 15th of the month is probably a good time, a cutoff time to say.
All right, thank you. And by the way, can I say, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Alderman Rainey.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Suzette, what do you think would be, or could you figure the impact for us for setting aside a certain number of stickers for seniors at a discounted rate? As you know, last night, Mrs. Green presented to us a very compelling story for seniors who need some relief. And I'm not talking about seniors that are not on fixed incomes, seniors who are eligible for other benefits at the city, having an opportunity to buy stickers, for example, at 50 cents a piece, or, you know, something like that. Could you, could you take a look at that?
We'll take a look at that.
Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, another question, Suzette, that's on here that I've been receiving from people, is that if the street sweeping signs on your block have not been changed yet, it's here, but you didn't get a chance to read it. But if they have not been updated yet, then the street sweeping schedule does not apply to you. Because I've had people say, when does it start? For me, the signs aren't changed yet.
Yes.
Could you just make that very clear? And also, congratulations, or Bravo Zulu, as we say in the Navy.
Thank you. And you're right, I meant to check that, because that is a very, what happened is our one-sided street, where the streets that have one-sided parking only, those are special order signs, those are signs that we have to special order every year and put in place when we used to put the dates on them. And when we switched the program, we had to order the new signs. And they won't be in until Friday. And as a result, the message that we tell any residents that they park is they normally would, and they will not be held accountable until the sign is in place.
Congratulations, Suzette, I see no more lights.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have one additional presentation. As you mentioned in your proclamation, we are proud to have been a Tree City for many years, and we are continuing that tradition again this year. Paul DiAgostino, our superintendent from Forestry, is here with a presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased and proud to announce that for the 26th straight year, the City of Evanston has been designated as a Tree City USA. There are only 10 other communities within Illinois that have a longer consecutive year streak than we do. The state of Illinois is also number two in the country for the number of Tree City USAs. City of Evanston has continued to make improvements to our urban forest program over the past year. Our dedicated staff has been able to maintain our elm tree injection program by completing 228 injections last summer, and with another 175 scheduled for this coming summer. Dutch elm disease losses were reduced last year to slightly more than 1.6% of the overall population by the combination of aggressive scouting for symptoms of the disease, prompt removal of infested trees, and the regular injection of over 2,100 of our public elm trees. Forestry staff was also able to trim nearly 800 parkway trees, removed almost 500 trees that were dead, diseased, or hazardous. More than half of those were actually due to emerald ashbore, and planted nearly 700 additional new trees citywide. Evanston has also received the Tree City USA Growth Award for the 11th year. This award is for communities that go above and beyond the requirements necessary to receive the Tree City USA Award. The city received this growth award based on two new activities that we conducted in 2009. The first was our hosting of a tree care workshop in combination with the USDA Forest Service on the mulching and pruning techniques of young trees. This workshop was held during a farmer's market last August, was quite successful. The second activity that helped us achieve the growth award was our participation as a host site for the release of the emerald ashbore parasitic wasps, again in conjunction with the USDA Forest Service last July. And we hope to see some results of that experimental release later this summer. And I'm convinced that as we continue to work with our federal and state officials, that the City of Evanston will remain at the forefront in urban tree care initiatives. I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for your continued support of our urban forestry program, as well as the hard work and dedication of all of our forestry employees. Neither of you, neither of these awards would be possible without all of you. And now, Madam Mayor, I'd like to present you with our Tree City USA flag. So we'll trade stuff today.
Where's Eric? I guess.
Gee, that's not, that's not our person.
We need to have this.
We'll get another picture.
City Manager, does that conclude your presentation?
One additional item, although I believe we mentioned it last night, but good news you can never say enough times. Dave Stonebeck, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, has also, has a new job responsibility, is now Director of a newly-formed Utilities Department. So again, congratulations today. Madam Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have some communications today. As you know, we have, it's been a long time coming, but we have had an agent in the downtown Loop for many years, working with our real estate transfer stamps. We lost that sometime this year. But I asked Mr. Cook to turn on the projector. As you will now see, we have gone paperless with the RETT form. We have now put it online. If you go to our city website, go to Government, click down to City Clerk, go over to the left side and click down on the Real Estate Transfer Stamp Tax. You will then bring it to another screen that will also show you that you can click on and download the form. Now then, those people who are handling our real estate, who are not in Evanston, but from out of town, and also downtown Loop, can now add their information on the form, make two copies when they're completed, send that form in through mail or in person, then they will receive their stamps, as long as the water bill is paid and any other liens against the property has been taken care of. So as of 10 o'clock this morning, this went online, and we had our first person who used it. The only thing I failed to put on it was the address to send it here to the City Clerk's office. But we're now in the 20, I won't say 20, we're in the 25th century. Whether now, I think that this will help a lot of us to get everything done properly. Any questions, and I have a second.
Alderman Rainey had a question.
Clerk Green, I'd like to know, when do people believe they've made the payment for their stamps? At the time they send in their money or their credit card information in their form? What's the formal announcement to them that their transaction has taken place?
Once we receive the form into the office, and everything has been approved, that everything's been taken care of, they have the necessary documents to show that everything's been taken care of, then we then inform them that the property has been properly received their stamps.
And what form does that notice take? Is it a?
It would be an email or a letter from me or a phone call from the office to let the person who sent it in know that their process has been taken care of properly.
Don't a lot of stamps get purchased on the day of closing?
Yes.
And so what, I mean, for example, they send in the form on the day of closing, and let's say their credit card's been canceled or something, or they owe liens, or they owe an outstanding, how is it that, I'm not understanding how that's taking place?
Before any property receives any stamps from the office, all of the possibilities looking into. the possibilities is looking into whether or not the property is free from any monies that are due to the city, they will not receive that stamp until that's been taken care of. So even if they send it in to us, we will still check to make sure, with property standards, with water, that all of the necessary bills have been taken care of before that stamp is released.
Thank you.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yeah, and I think that the, the process that's in place right now will get better as time goes on, because the title companies will become involved. So to the extent that they can rely on that process, then sometimes title companies would accept verification from the clerk's office that the transfer stamps have been purchased, and, and once it's issued, then the title company receives it. So I think that this online process will facilitate a lot of stuff, but at the same time, it will take some time for people to get used to, to the notion.
Exactly. Any other questions? My second announcement is that we've been having a lot of problems with our codification of our ordinances and resolutions online. We have investigated a few codifiers, and we narrowed it down that in about 90 to 60 days, we'll have a new face, new user-friendlyer position, you know, send a memorandum to everyone that it will show that the citizens will be able to go online, look at any ordinance or resolution, and their amendments at a very easier spot, or easier time than they did in the past. We're now working on a contract with Municipal Code, and also there are two links that you can look at, some of the pages that they've got in other municipalities. And we've talked to them, and they have all been very, very pleased with Municipal Code, and I think that we'll all be saving 15% over the long run, and I think this will also help us to be more transparent and viable to the municipalities and anyone else who needs to look at our ordinances and resolutions online. Any questions?
Can I just?
Yes, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yep, and I think, Clerk Green, once you have that up and going, and I think even now, you could, you know, stop sending the hard copies to, you know, because at some point, we don't have any room to accumulate all the hard copies that we get. So we appreciate that.
That was one of the ways I was thinking about becoming more paperless. That way, people can take down or make copies of their own if they want, instead of the clerk's office supplying all of that. Because we are running out of space in storage, so I think this would be a great move in bringing the city up to par, to make it even better for everyone else to do what they have to do.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Next, we have a special order of business, but most of the citizens who've signed up for citizen comment, I believe, want to comment on our special order of business, so I'm going to change the agenda and call for citizen comment first. I'm going to read your names out, and each of you have two and a half minutes to speak, and then we should be able to get through with everyone in the 30 minutes provided. If someone has said what you want to say, you can just say that you agree with them, and you don't need to repeat it. Trust us, we'll have heard it. The first four speakers are Kevin Glenn, Nate Kipnis, Nikolai Shuspo on Elmwood, I apologize for whatever I just did to your name, and Lyle Harrison. Please give your name and address.
My name is Kevin Glenn. I live at 2119 Sherman. I'm a member of the city environment board, and I'm part of Citizens for Greener Evanston. I'm here to advocate for the RFI for the wind farm offshore from, from Evanston. We've done quite a bit of research on this as a group. You'll hear these two gentlemen, and we'll also speak. Nate's got some detail on, on exactly what we're talking about. I will bring to your attention, for the city right now, this does not cost anything to get, we need to study the situation more closely, we need professional opinions from wind developers, we need some more studies on ecological issues around birds, bats, fish, and so forth. Those are all unresolved. Everything we've seen to date indicates that we have a very favorable site for putting a wind farm offshore, and so I urge you to, to approve that. I would also call to your attention that today you got by email, a letter of support from our state senator, Jeffrey Schoenberg, who urges you with strong support to pass the RFI. And you'll hear more from Carolyn and these two gentlemen here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Nate Kipnis. I'm a local architect. I'm just wondering if my time is better after Carolyn's, or not? I'm not sure, I mean, I'd rather follow up on questions that'll arise from that, so I'm going to pass.
All right, guys, I'm trying to help you out. You want to, you want to have citizen comment after Carolyn, and after we've discussed it?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think that if.
All right, I'll just go ahead. So this is a showing where the wind farm is located, and it is seven miles offshore, or could be up to nine miles offshore. This is going to depend on how the developers see it. To give you some reference, the wind farm is out at the tip here, and it would be 40 turbines that would generate enough power for about 40,000 homes. Evanston has about 30,000 residences. The distance being that eight, seven to nine miles, if you go the other way, that's about the border between Niles and Morton Grove, just for some reference. This is not very close to shore. The reason we feel this site is so interesting is the lake is very shallow. The red is indicating relatively shallow water. Nine miles out, it's about 90 feet deep. You can see the wind farm right here. You can also see how the lake begins to roll back to the west, past that point, so the distance that I was saying is the straight line distance, it's actually much further as you go up north. It's directly in line with Northwestern. Most of the wind farms that are being proposed in the United States are being done in conjunction with universities that have major engineering programs. So we think that's a really, really good fit. The other interesting thing is Dawes Park and Northwestern are about two miles long. That's the, I believe, the longest non-residential strip between Waukegan and Southworks in Chicago. The wind that would be off of Chicago is, has a lot of turbulence due to the tall buildings, so we don't have that, and that's a really nice feature. The wind is amazing offshore. The estimated speed we think it's at is about 18 or more miles an hour, which is just prime wind. And so those are the reasons we think this is a really interesting proposal. We think that very specific site is a great site. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Nikolai Skolspo. I'm, live at 1139 Elmwood, and I'm a community co-chair of Citizens for Greener Evanston. I was just asked to give some context, and I wanted to, to point out that, that this is not a, a new concept by any stretch. Offshore winds are an operating fact in Europe, producing power as we speak, and in short order, they'll soon be coming to North America. And aside from projects on the Atlantic seaboard, there are several projects in the Great Lakes region that also has, that are also underway. The New York Power Authority in December of 2009 issued a request for proposals for Great Lake offshore wind farms on a utility scale up to 500 megawatts, at 10 sites in Lake Ontario and 13 sites in Lake Erie. The timeline is, is they're looking for the proposals by June 1 of this year, and completion of the power purchase agreements by May 31 of 2011. In Ohio, a task force undertook a feasibility study last year. They're now pushing for a 92 billion, million dollar project to build up to eight turbines three to five miles off Cleveland's coastline. And their timeline is they hope to have the regulatory issues resolved by the end of 2010, have a permit-ready site, and have the project built by, by 2013. In Ontario, one company has a project underway to build 142 turbine, 710 megawatt project in eastern Lake Ontario, and all the projects that this company alone has submitted for approval total 3,700 megawatts. Toronto may also get a 2,000 megawatt offshore wind farm. They've already received approval to lease Lake Ontario land to build a test platform to measure wind speed. Some of the most interesting developments is nearby in Michigan, both for the proposed projects and for the parallel development of public guidelines and oversight. In Muskegon, Grand Valley State University is in partnership with the University of Michigan, and have received state and federal grants already for $2.7 million to help pay for construction of a floating data collection platform in, in Lake Michigan. Also in the news is, is a wind farm proposal in Lake, Ludington and Grand Haven, Michigan. The current wind farm proposal is 1,000 megawatts of totaling approximately 100 turbines. This has already gone through one round of community consultation, and the developer has asked the affected county boards and municipalities to weigh in with their, on their revised plan by September 1. Interestingly enough, Michigan is the one state where they, they've seemed to take, recognize that this is inevitable, and have taken action to create a, a wind council. This was, the members are appointed by the governor, key state agency representatives and other stakeholders. They are tasked with identifying the most favorable areas to lease for offshore wind development, provide guidance to legal and technical experts as they develop model leasing solicitation documents, and recommend options for how the public could be compensated for bottom land leasing and wind rights for wind energy systems. This group will issue their final report and complete work in 2010. So there is some steps that are being taken ahead of anything that we would do here. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your work on this.
Excuse me, I'm the fourth person to speak. My name is Lyle Harrison. My address is 1007 Ashland, Evanston, Illinois. I was born in Evanston. I went to Evanston Township High School where I got my engineering scholarship, and I went to engineering school in Michigan, and I did my MBA at Thunderbird. I'm just here to tell you that as far as the technology, it's there. It wasn't there 20 years ago. You'd have to have about 80 turbines, and maybe the, the size of the project would have had to been about nine square miles. Now that, that footprint's reduced to about two, three square miles. I'm a wind developer. I represent Mercury Energy LLC. I met with some officials from General Motors this past weekend. They're going to, have asked me to do another presentation for them, for a facility in Wilmington, Delaware. I'm interested in doing it in my hometown, because my, my business is here, and because I, I think it's a good thing for Evanston. And I guess the last thing I'd like to leave with you is that, you know, many people are talking about the, the, the against wind farms because of the visual impact, but they're really not talking about the, the problem with what we have right now. Most of our energy is generated in this area by nuclear, from Commonwealth Edison up in Zion. And we have some that we're using on coal, and some that we're depending on, on oil. Only 1% of energy in Commonwealth Edison in this area is generated from renewable energy. The rest of it is all nuclear or, or coal. And people aren't looking at the total effect. You have to, you have to mine coal, people die when they mine it. It's shipped here, so you're spending CO2 to get it here, or to the plant where it's going to be burned. Then the ashes are carted back to another site, and then they're buried. And the problem is, there's been arsenic poisoning because it's leached into the soil, and then carried, and people are dying in Alabama from the, the disposal. And the same is true of nuclear waste. I mean, we, our power is generated by nuclear waste, but how many people in Evanston would want the nuclear waste to be stored in Evanston? So just something to consider is, is the whole life cycle, and how we should, we should do unto others as we want them to do unto us. So if we did allow, or, or pursue this option, you're looking at adding a tax revenue from the, the towers from two to four million dollars, depending on how much you allow.
I need you to wrap up.
And just using a small footprint of about three square miles, out of maybe 600. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jeff Smith, Libby Hill, and Bill Schumer on Greenwood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. Imagine, if you will, the corner of Church and Ridge a century and a half ago, a house built by Alexander McDaniel. And Evanston with streets of dirt and the ink barely dry on its charter from the state of Illinois, the paint practically fresh at the one building school daring to call itself a university. How extraordinary an event it must have been for half the town to gather outside that house, to bang on pans and sound horns until the visitor inside deigned to say a few words, and then shake hands. In April of 1860, this town was only three decades removed from woods and wetlands known mainly to Native Americans. So what was it that in 30 years after the Treaty of Prairie du Chien caused over 800 people to move to this place nestled between swamp and lake? And what on an April evening 150 years ago could cause half that town to gather in one spot, without benefit of telephone or Twitter? And what about this town had caused a speaker of national fame to ride the train here, to share supper and song with the village elders, and then greet the crowd assembled outside? Three and a half years after that April visit to Evanston, the speaker would say that the world would little note, nor long remember his words, and he would be wrong. In spring one year later, despite presiding over a heartrending conflict, he would say that we must act with malice toward none and charity toward all, and he would be right. In spring a year after that, he would be dead in Evanston, like all the nation would weep. I offer this brief history lesson, because if the world is millions of year old, then 150 years is a mere blip, and 30 years the length of time many a citizen from this podium has declared they've lived in Evanston is but a mayfly's flicker. And it would be my contention that it was a shared sense of values, values that would lead to an historic emancipation and a recognition of an activist citizenry that brought that visitor to Evanston. And that by taking a step tonight toward an historic and necessary American energy emancipation, and ratifying citizen activism, Evanston reaffirms its standing as a town where lofty values resonate. What we don't remember, we forget; when we forget, we may repeat. By contrast, when we act with a sense of history, we act at our best. In April in Evanston, 150 years ago this week, an event occurred that should not go unremembered. May what we start tonight be noted by historians as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three more speakers who are not on the wind farm, but I think we might as well finish up. Citizen Comment, Priscilla Giles. Oh, Libby, I'm sorry. My apologies, Libby.
That's all right. I was just sitting down, and I'll, I'll be, try to be brief. I'm representing the Evanston North Shore Bird Club and the Bird Conservation Network. And you may think that this is going to be a negative, and in fact, somebody tried outside to make me into a negative about the wind farm, but I resisted that, because we do believe in alternative energy and a sustainable Evanston, and so on. And all we are asking for is that, we did do, we have been working, we have, I did call Carolyn Colapi as soon as we heard about the wind farm, and we were very excited about it, because we support alternative energy. And we did give a presentation to Citizens for Greener Evanston. And the main thing we're saying is that all wind farms are site-specific, and so the fact that there are all these other wind farms coming up is wonderful, and we think that that is really great. And we want to make sure that the research that's done for this specific site is, takes into account not only bird migration, which is one of the things that people worry about is the turbines are going to chew up the birds, but also the habitat, because we actually have ducks living out in the lake. And the, the map that was shown before, I, I have this to give out to everybody, but you'd be able to see from this that there's, the birds go way, way farther than nine miles out into the, into the lake, and we have birds living there all year round. So it's just a matter of asking that on the request for information, and number three, topical areas for respondent feedback under environmental, that you look at not only migration, but also habitat, and specify that these are both important things. And we think that will make Evanston's wind farm a model for everybody, and that's what we want it to be, is a model for everybody. So anyway, that would be, thank you very much for listening, and can I give this out?
Yes, you absolutely can. Thank you, Libby.
Hi, I'm Bill Schwimmer on Greenwood Street, and I'm here to oppose this proposal for a very simple reason. And aside from the questions of feasibility, cost, maintenance, possible environmental damage during building, and so forth. damage during building and so forth, it violates a very important principle, which is that there should be no development of the lakefront or the lake. I've been very vigilant for years, looking at all sorts of proposals that have been floated. And regardless of the merits of this proposal, that's what this amounts to. I know there's going to be tendency to trivialize opposition to this. I hope that doesn't happen. But again, regardless of the merits, this is an artificial intrusion into the vast natural environment we have in these parts. And I think people need to seriously consider the consequences, not only of this proposal, but this will certainly lead to more development and more intrusion to this natural environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Giles, if, Jeff, you've already spoken. I assume you're not speaking again, and Ellen Newcomer. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm speaking as the membership chair of the Evanston Public Library Friends tonight. And I'm here in support of National Library Week, which began on Sunday. And to update you on the Evanston Public Library Friends' membership and fundraising progress. The Friends incorporated the first week in March, just after the conclusion of the budget hearings. We're an independent, community-based organization dedicated to strengthening Evanston Public Library's innovation, leadership and neighborhood outreach. The enthusiasm of Evanstonians for our mission has been excellent as of today, just a little more than a month after EPL Friends' formation. The organization has 1,286 members and we have so far raised $70,000. Charter membership in the Library Friends continues through the end of this week and we encourage those who've not yet joined to do so. We'll have membership tables at all three libraries all week. In addition to membership, the Friends is planning its first major fundraiser in May and will conclude our first read-a-thon for children this weekend. If you have a chance, please walk down Central Street this week and look at the book display that Ann Foster did and take a moment to remember that almost 25% of the visits to the Evanston Library are to the South or North Branch. Moreover, circulation at the branches has increased dramatically in the last few years, indeed at a rate multiple times that of the main library. In hard economic times, people use their libraries even more. In conclusion, National Library Week reminds us that our public libraries help us find jobs, create new careers and grow small businesses. Every day, 300,000 Americans go job-seeking at their public library to get job-seeking help. And every year, Americans go to the library more than to the movies or professional sporting events. There is more free Wi-Fi at libraries than at Starbucks and 2/3rds of Americans have library cards. When asked who needs libraries these days, the mayor of a nearby city answered as follows: "I think you have to understand what a library does. It's more than the internet, more than a bookstore. It's part of the community and educational place for all ages to go. In a knowledge-based society and economy, we'd better be promoting more and more libraries." That was Mayor Richard Daley, who has built or renovated over 50 branch libraries in the last 17 years. Happy National Library Week.
Thank you. City manager, that concludes public comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The special item of business that we have for you this evening is an update on the city council's goal regarding the Climate Action Plan. Carolyn Colapi, our sustainability coordinator, is with us this evening. She has a presentation to give you an update in general terms on where we're at with the Climate Action Plan. But as you also know, another item, part of this item is requesting your approval to issue a request for information for the development of a power from an offshore wind energy facility in Lake Michigan, which the public speakers have spoke to and Ms. Colapi will talk about more in detail. But first, she'll start with a general update on the implementation of the city's Climate Action Plan. Good evening, Ms. Colapi.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. As the city manager said, I'm going to provide an update on our progress, implementation progress, since I was last here, last November, when I presented some priorities for implementation on the Climate Action Plan. And I'm also going to talk about a few other things that we've been working on that were not prioritized or discussed in that November presentation. And then I'll talk a little bit about where we should go from here. As I mentioned in November, we recently collected data for our 2006, 2007 and our 2008 community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. And we, I currently have somebody who is finishing up the analysis of that. I'm hoping to have a report issued in about a month. And then this summer intend to recruit an intern to start collecting our 2009 data. But what we found was unfortunately, our 2008 community-wide greenhouse gas emissions had, over those three years, our emissions were growing. And our 2008 emissions had actually gone 1% above what we projected our emissions were going to be in 2012, which is our end year for our 7% below 1990 levels by 2012. So that forced us to readjust our 2012 target and we're now moving forward with a slightly higher target. The good news is that our municipal emissions, the efforts we've been taking on the municipal level have been somewhat successful and we've actually gone 3% below what our target was for, the city's target, that's simply its operations. So that's good news. In November, I proposed setting, I had six items that I set as priorities. And I'm going to, in the next couple of slides, go through the details of what we've done specifically on how we're connecting businesses and residents to energy efficiency resources that are out there and how we're working with our largest institutions to gain their support around our efforts to meet our greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal. And then I'm going to save the lake discussion for last. But then the other two items that I came in November and suggested we prioritize were to set, we've got over 200 strategies in the Climate Action Plan and I recommended prioritizing a smaller list of those strategies for the next three years. The city manager asked the citizens for Greener Evanston, who are a local citizen group that were instrumental in developing the plan, to come up with a list of priorities. And they're working on that and hope to see them give that to the city manager here in the next month. Tied to that is setting a greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal beyond 2012. Our emissions goal right now only takes us to 2012 and many are looking at an 80% reduction by 2050. Obviously, we need to look beyond 2012 as, as the issue is continuing to grow. So one of the priorities that we established in November was to work harder to connect our low-income and moderate-income households to some of the resources out there that they could take advantage of to get their homes weatherized. One of those resources is the Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program. It's a federally funded program that's administered through the state and locally it's coordinated by CEDA. The reports that we've seen from CEDA in the last few years have shown a handful of homes weatherized per year, five to 10. So we partnered with CEDA in January and held an event, a one-day event that was called the Affordable Living Fair. And that day, CEDA reports that they processed 21 applications, which is not a lot, but a significant improvement when you consider what, how many houses we've seen per year be weatherized. And I'm hoping that's just a small percentage of what we see for the year total. In February, the city launched its own residential weatherization grant program, which is funded through our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. This program has a slightly higher income guideline, so we hope to reach more homes than are eligible under the Illinois program. Since February, we've had energy audits done on 12 units and we've completed weatherization on three. And we hope to weatherize up to 60 units by the end of 2011. We'll continue to work with CEDA to promote the Illinois program to our residents. They met with the citizens for Greener Evanston recently and are going to be working with CGE to, to do more outreach to our residents around their program. Another strategy that we prioritized for implementation was to connect our businesses to the resources out there, primarily COMEd's Smart Ideas for Your Business Program. This program offers an incentive to business owners who make electric energy efficiency improvements. Through the Community Energy Challenge, which the city was a participant of, we were allocated $350,000 in incentive dollars to, just for Evanston businesses. We unfortunately did not get to spend all of that money, but the, there has been substantial progress made in this program. The first year, this is the second year that COMEd has offered their Smart Ideas for Your Business Program. And the first year, there were five projects in Evanston submitted. This year, there were 48. The city is getting credit for half of those, for our outreach efforts to get businesses to participate. And in addition, COMEd offers a refrigerator and roommate air conditioner turn-in program, which has energy savings tied to it. It also has a recycling component. The first year they offered that program, they had 66 units turned in. And this year, as of February, the program year goes up until the end of May, they were at 158. So that's seen a substantial increase as well. Four of the more popular COMEd programs, the Smart Ideas for Your Businesses, the Refrigerator Turn-In, their all-electric program for multifamily, and LED Holiday Exchange Program that we implemented over the holidays. Through those four programs, almost a quarter of a million was leveraged through COMEd in our community. And then there's the emission reductions tied to that as well. The third strategy that we suggested we prioritize was to bring together the largest institutions or organizations in Evanston. And this past March, we established a working committee, the Evanston Green Ribbon Committee, which is made up of representatives from Northwestern Rotary, Evanston Hospital, St. Francis, District 65 and District 202. And the goal is to discuss environmental issues that face this community, share best practices and resources, and hopefully discuss ways that we can come together and collaborate on larger-scale projects that will support our emission reduction goal. We intend to meet four times a year, and so our next meeting will be in June. Some other projects that we've had underway or are about to finish that weren't prioritized but are certainly achieving emission reduction goals are some lighting upgrades. We recently completed a lighting upgrade at Maple Street Garage. We have a couple of LED street signal replacements happening soon on Central Street. And we are about to have our first renewable power installation at a city facility, which will be online at the end of May. It's a 25 KW solar photovoltaic system. It'll be at the water plant. And initially, we had proposed a 5 KW system that was going to be funded through our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. We were able to secure much, we were able to secure a sizable grant through the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation, which allowed us to go up to a 25 KW system. So we're very excited to unveil our first renewable energy installation at a municipal facility. These projects, excluding the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant funding that has, that is funding some of them, have leveraged through state grants close to $200,000 in outside funding through grants, mostly the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities Public Sector Energy Efficiency Incentive Program. We also just completed in January our year-long effort to convert our 18-gallon recycling containers to 65- and 95-gallon containers. We believe this is going to, well, this is going to substantially increase our capacity to collect recycling. Currently, our diversion rate is between 41% and 42%. And if we are able to, with this increased capacity, just get up to a 45% diversion rate, there's some considerable emission reductions tied to that. This program, we were able to secure two grants through the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity of $60,000 apiece. Some other projects that we have coming up, we're about to issue requests for proposals for another renewable energy installation. We're looking at solar thermal installations at two of our fire stations. And we're going to also swap out the lighting at Church Street Garage. And we have a major effort that we'll be starting hopefully this summer to upgrade our Davin Arm streetlights to more efficient lighting. These projects are also funded, partially funded through our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, but we've also gone outside that and secured more funding from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity through their public sector energy efficiency rebates. And hopefully for the solar thermal installation of the fire stations, we'll be able to secure some funding through their renewable energy rebate program. We're still waiting to hear back on our application. Some other things that we have planned are with our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant funding, we are going to be purchasing recycling containers. We'll be expanding our recycling collection program. And we'll be putting containers out on our commercial districts where we currently collect garbage. That'll be in the public right-of-way out on the street. We've got about 200 containers that we currently collect in eight different commercial districts throughout the city. And hopefully, depending on the cost of those containers, we may be able to expand into our parks as well. We have a car-free day that we're, we're planning, a campaign. This fall, we'll launch that and that will be funded through the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. As part of our Community Energy Challenge Plan, we, and also tied to the Climate Action Plan, we proposed a porch light campaign, which will launch on Earth Day. We'll be encouraging residents to switch their porch lights to a CFL. And part of that campaign will involve distributing 2,500 CFLs free to encourage residents further. We're looking this summer to hire an intern to develop a green street rating system. This will be similar to, say, green building rating systems such as LEED, which we have for buildings. But it'll apply to streets. It'll look at everything from stormwater management, materials used in the street, the lighting on a street, whether or not there's recycling on the street. So we're excited to go down that road and see what might be possible and see if we can come up with a standard for Evanston. And then finally, the Environment Board has very enthusiastically been scouring through the Climate Action Plan and picking out all of the strategies that they feel they can tackle and directly apply to them. And one of the projects they've been working on is a review of our code to see where we have conflicts with strategies that we've outlined in the Climate Action Plan. That should be coming forward in the coming months. So in summary, the projects that I just reviewed add up collectively to just under 11,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent in greenhouse gas emissions reduction. That's about 7% of what our 2012 target is. It's a long way from it. We're making progress. We're doing our best to leverage funding. We've, with our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, we've secured close to $1.25 million in additional funding to fund these initiatives. But we're still a long way from our goal. And so my recommendation moving forward is that we need to continue these efforts to reach, reach out to the community, to encourage them to make energy efficiency improvements and connect them to the resources that are out there. But we've got a long ways to go. 7% of that 2012 goal isn't much. And I think even if we were able to get the entire community on board, we may be able to reach that 2012 goal, the emission target. But if we're going to look But if we're going to look at setting a long-term goal, something such as 80% by 2050, there's just no way we're going to hit that just by doing energy efficiency and recycling measures alone. And I think we need to consider renewable energy options, which is what I'm going to discuss next. As you heard earlier, the Citizens for Greener Evanston, for the last two and a half years since we started developing the Climate Action Plan, have been looking at this idea of renewable energy development off of the shore of Evanston in Lake Michigan. The reason they find this so, one of the reasons it's so attractive, when you're looking at mass production of renewable energy, we are a dense urban environment, and we don't, we can't generate the type of energy, electricity, we would need from wind in the city. It's just, there's too much development. Certainly, there are other things we can look at, but when you're, when you're trying to take into costs and ease, I think this is what they found from their research, possibly viable option. And so what we're asking tonight, there's been no precedent set yet as to how to go about this. Last fall, some Northwestern students put together a report. They went about trying to answer the question, so if Evanston wanted to develop wind resources off of the shore of Lake Michigan, how would they do that, given there's no precedence? Certainly, there is, there are proposals moving forward, but there's no set steps to take. And so they outlined three steps that they recommended we take, the first being to issue a request for information, followed by an RFP if we decide that the information provided, if anything comes back from an RFI that we're interested in moving forward, and then selecting a developer is the last step. The RFI, you know, CGE has done a lot of research, but to take it to the next step, we really need to hear from the wind development community. Issuing an RFI is not going to commit us to moving forward. It's going to provide answers, hopefully, to a lot of the questions that we have right now. It'll identify any potential partners, which will tell us if it is actually possible. If we get any responses, we'll know that, yes, it is a viable site. It'll help us determine what our role would be if we so choose to move forward with issuing an RFP, if we were to have any role in the process. And then it would also just help us understand all of the steps that we need to take, what types of environmental studies need to be done, what types of wind feasibility studies need to be done, what's the cost of those, what would, what would a developer propose the size of a system like this be, or a farm like this be? CGE mentioned 40 turbines. I think that, you know, we would have to wait to see what a developer would say is economically viable, and also, that would depend on the site. So there are a lot of questions that we have that I think at this point, we need professionals to answer, and I would recommend, staff would recommend that the next step be to issue an RFI. And if we get any responses, we can review them and at that point, determine if this is something that makes sense to pursue.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate to ask questions now? Were you done, Carolyn?
Yes.
One of the speakers tonight mentioned $2 to $4 million in revenue to the city. Is that something that you've, a number that you've run across? I don't know where that number's coming from, so.
I think that would depend on what a developer would propose, what their business plan would be, how they would propose the city be involved, and I don't know the answer to that. I think that's a question that we would be looking to get an answer to.
So staff has not, has not determined that the $2 to $4 million is something that is...
No, no, I do, I do not know the answer to that.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Fisk, I think as Ms. Colapi mentioned, this is sort of a new territory for us, and I think we can look at other models of wind turbine farms that are on land, certainly there are other parts of the world where they're out in bodies of water. So we really are, this is uncharted territory for us. I think that's, again, why the RFI is so important, so that we can come up with some answers to these questions. And, you know, we can't extrapolate many things from other, other projects. So we really have to go and see what the market will bear with our particular set of facts and the location that we're looking at in Lake Michigan.
Alderman Wilson.
Has there been much discussion or analysis as to what the, I assume that there's going to be on-land infrastructure and what that's going to look like and where that might be?
Those are questions that we would hope to get answered through the RFI process.
Seeing no other lights, Alderman Grover.
Just briefly, thank you, Ms. Colapi. What's the timing on issuing the RFI and getting responses back? When might we have all the information that we seem to need so much?
Well, if council is willing to encourage us to go forward and issue this, I think we would issue it within the next week or so and set a timeline that's accordingly, that makes sense, to give enough time to respond. So I would think the next couple of months.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because this appeared in our packet with such extraordinary glowing recommendations, I don't know very much about wind turbines. I've seen some from a distance, I just don't know very much about them. I spent the weekend going on the internet and just seeing what I could find and what I could read. And I'm not sure that the information that was presented to us was entirely balanced, and I think there are some big concerns out there. And just to make it clear to everyone, I have a ton of questions about this, and I would be happy either to put those questions in writing and send them to the city manager if we're going to go ahead with the request for information. But I want to go through a few of them tonight, if you would. These, the turbines are incredibly large, incredibly large. They're as tall as the Wrigley Building, a span of almost a football field. These are not little windmills, these are big machines. Some of them are very loud, they all kill wildlife, they create wakes and rough water, they're hit by lightning, they burn, they fall over, they ice up, some in Minnesota won't even run in freezing weather. They have lights and fog horns to warn off boaters. They raise the land temperature slightly and lower water temperature slightly, and they're owned by developers. They have a lifespan of roughly 20 to 30 years and generally don't turn a profit for at least 15 years, and that's not even figuring the cost of financing. They're very expensive to build and operate and for a small amount of energy that they're producing. Now, all that said, should we be looking at alternative wind energy? Absolutely. Is this the right place to put it? I'm not sure. Part of the problem is that we're going to be dealing with a developer in the middle of Lake Michigan, I mean, one of our treasured assets. We just went through the lakefront plan where everyone was talking about how much they love the peace and tranquility and spirit of renewal that, that our lakefront parks represent. And these, I was surprised to see this because I thought we wouldn't see anything as far as turbines, and now I'm looking at this and going, oh, you can see the turbines. I have heard from a few people in my ward who have been concerned about this, and I told them that we would be getting more information, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. I do think that there are other, more cost-effective and economically viable means to achieve the same end. And I just think we need to proceed really cautiously. We are in the middle of the Central Flyway, which is a major migratory route for large birds. I mean, if you've, anyone's seen a gray heron, they stand four feet tall. These are large birds that go through the Central Flyway in winter in Indiana. I don't want to get too graphic, but as the New York Times reported last year, bats actually explode when they get near wind turbines. These are animals that, you know, 10 million bats a year are killed, not by strikes with turbines, but because they can't, they react obviously badly to, to the noise that's generated from turbines. There's other economic conditions and considerations. Apparently, the cost for constructing a wind farm, to the best of my in-expert research, is roughly double the cost for constructing one on land. And my understanding from Crane Chicago Business is that the city of Chicago has elected to investigate wind turbines on land rather than in the lake because of the cost and because of the wide availability of farmland in Illinois. I think there's a really good case study from the Netherlands where they've looked at turbines that have been in place for many years, and that was a very objective report, and I found that really interesting. And there's also a very good report from the Department of Natural Resources from the state of Illinois about the effect on wildlife and migration. So I'm just really, I'm sorry to take so much time, but I don't want to be criticized later for not raising these questions at the appropriate moment, so, and I will forward these on to the city manager. But my quick concerns, does Evanston even have jurisdiction over a wind farm in the lake? I mean, legally, I think our, our area ends at the shoreline. And who leases the land? Is it the developer that leases the land, is it a partnership with the city? I know you've brought up some of these questions that need to be answered. Is private development in the lake a good idea? Who's going to pay for it and how? How much will it cost Evanston taxpayers? And, you know, what, how much money will the city have to be, be putting in? To whom will the electricity be sold? Will it be strictly, as someone mentioned, it may have been you, that this could go to, to power Evanston houses? I'm not sure that that's entirely necessarily the case.
These are all, most of these are questions we hope to answer through the RFI process because we just don't have the answers to these questions, and I think we, we need to have the information from wind developers to, to be able to have these discussions and talk seriously about it and consider whether or not it is a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
And we just don't have that information yet.
No, and I agree with you, and if you'll just bear with me again, as I said, I just don't want to, I don't want to be criticized later on for coming up with something new. How far away is the grid? Some, Alderman Wilson raised a question about auxiliary buildings or structures in the report that was sent out in our packet. It mentioned some of those might be in the lake. I'm wondering about that. Is it possible that Evanston could build and finance the development? In which case, would we create a private electric company like Winnetka has, serving Evanston residents, or would we look to sell electric service to other communities? And with whom would the developer execute an agreement? My understanding is that this would be mainly the state and the federal government and the city sort of as a, as the third party, possibly, Commonwealth Edison or Exelon? Will our electric bills go down, because our water bills certainly haven't? And will 40 turbines be enough? I haven't seen a farm's 40 turbines small or anything proposed for that size. What's Northwestern University's role, the state of Illinois' role, the federal government's role? And since the turbines are manufactured and installed by others, will there be any permanent jobs for Evanston residents, and what kind of jobs would those be? And will the turbulence, and there's a lot of turbulence, there were some photographs online of turbulence, will that affect our freshwater intake? Does zoning apply? And the question I asked first is what revenue can we expect to come to Evanston? What's the interest of other, other lakeshore communities if they decide to build their own farms? And will Met or Winnetka or Glencoe or something? And what tax breaks are typically, typically given to the developers? The cost of maintenance? And, and I would really like to spin this off into an opportunity for us to look at other ways that we might develop alternatives that would affect our citizens maybe more directly in the health of, in the city, like replacing diesel buses with an electric system. So those are just some of my concerns. I'll forward them on to the city manager, but, you know, hope that those will be included in what you, what you ask.
Alderman Wilson.
I don't know if it's feasible, and I don't think anybody in the room realistically can say that they know with any degree of certainty that this is feasible, but personally, I'm very open and interested to see what kinds of proposals we can get. I don't think that the city should undertake to build this power plant, and I don't think anybody's suggesting that. But the fact of the matter is that here in Evanston and so many other places, we use energy that's produced elsewhere, and that means that there is a significant impact someplace else. And I believe that to some degree, we need to start taking responsibility for what we consume. So if you get within seven miles of a coal plant, I think you're going to find that it's much more unpleasant than seven miles within a wind turbine. Same thing would go for a coal mine or any of these other much more damaging types of operations. So I'm very interested in seeing what we get. I'm interested in getting this out there and, and seeing what we come up with. At some point, you have to take a step. I believe Alderman Fisk has all the right questions. These are the questions we need to ask throughout the process, but we need to express our interest and let people know that, that we are a possible destination for this.
Alderman Burris.
Thank you. Great presentation, and thank you to the Citizens for Greener Evanston. Amazing work. I was actually talking to someone who's on the Citizens for Greener Evanston earlier today, and Michael Drennan, who gave me a really good perspective of, you know, probably more than 100 years ago, and I probably, Dave Stonebeck will have the exact date, city of Evanston took its destiny in its hands by doing a water treatment plant and said, we're going to do something that's going to be sustainable for us and looking forward on, it's a revenue source, and we wouldn't be responsible to anyone else for, for our water. I think this is another time to look forward, take control of our energy destiny. This could be a source of civic pride in saying, we are not looking to others, we're not looking for other energy sources, we can produce the energy right here in Evanston. So I think that there's a lot of good questions Alderman Fisk brings up, I'm sure many others will as well, but Evanston is always looking to the future, and I think this is a great opportunity to do that, and I hope that we'll vote to get more information about this, this wind farm. And I, and I do believe it's a great opportunity to work with the university as well on, they have a great program, the Initiative for Sustainability in Energy at Northwestern, and great partnership opportunities. So thanks, and, and let's not look at all the negatives, let's look at the positives. We have a great future ahead of us. Thanks.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, Alderman Burris clarified, I think we have to be very careful, we're not looking for proposals here, and I've heard that several times. Let's see if we get, what proposals we get. We're looking for information. We're not hiring anybody as a result of the request for information, but we are looking to see what's out there, and, you know, nobody has the answers to these questions. So I would like to move that we direct Carolyn and her crew to go forward and develop a request for information.
A second.
Seeing no lights, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Carolyn.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Well, I don't think we can follow that, but...
Oh, I'll applaud for it.
Should we wait for two seconds?
Sure.
I'll tell you if you miss anything. All right.
Yeah, I'm running to the restroom, so you go ahead. You read away, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, they're fleeing.
We can hear from the press.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead, okay? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will read the consent agenda here. First item, Madam Mayor, is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 22nd. Is that a reaction to the minutes? Then, Madam Mayor, the Administration Public Works Committee requests the council's approval of the city of Evanston payroll through March 28th in the amount of $2,308,594.48. We request your approval of the city of Evanston bills through April 13 under the previous fiscal year in the amount of $1,105,597.62. For this fiscal year through April 14, in the amount of $2,585,326.88. Approval is requested for a single-source purchase of library automation services from Cooperative Computer Services in the amount of $94,595.25. Approval is requested of a contract award for roof replacement at the Fleetwood Jordaine Community Center Gymnasium. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder is GE Riddiford Company in Arlington Heights in the amount of $186,899. Next, an estimated annual user charge for 2010 with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for the disposal of our sludge generated as part of the water treatment process. The amount for the year 2010 is $374,508.79 calculated over a monthly period, on monthly payments. Pace Suburban Bus Shelter Transfer Agreement is before us for approval. The city is requesting that we take over the maintenance of the bus shelters offered by Pace that are now being used by the Chicago Transit CTA, who does not do maintenance nor do they own bus shelters. So, staff is requesting that we take over the maintenance of those. The 2010 refuse and yard waste disposal fees from SWANQ, the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, in the amount of $90,000 for capital costs, $950,000 for operations and maintenance, and $120,000 in yard waste fees. This is funded through, what, let's see, yard waste costs, the accounts have budgets of $100,000, $100,000, $1,080,000, and $175,000, sorry about that. Next is Resolution 24R10, which authorizes the city manager to sign a local agency state agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of Isabella Street from Ewing to Green Bay and Emerson from Leland Avenue to Asbury. The amount provided by the city of Evanston is $45,589 for water and sewer work in these projects. Next, for introduction, is Ordinance 26O10, which approves the authorizing revenue bond and related matters thereto having to do with Caraveli being the conduit for their financing. Next is Ordinance 19O10, which is for action, a special assessment for alley paving project north of Lincoln, east of Eastwood Avenue. It is the northeast west leg. Under Planning and Development, a request for approval for the Sidewalk Cafe for Jackeys on Prairie, 2545 Prairie Avenue. The next item, Madam Mayor, I'm going to introduce and ask the committee chair to suspend the rules when there is a committee presentation. Ordinance 25O10, which grants a special use for a type-two restaurant at 719 Church Street in the D2 downtown retail core zoning district, which is Andy's Frozen Custard. Next, Ordinance 18O10, which designates the property located in 1724, 1728, 1730, and 1732 Chicago Avenue as the Women's Christian Temperance Union Evanston Historic District. Under Human Services Committee, that committee requests your approval of the township monthly bills in the amount of $107,533.81. Madam Mayor, the chairman of the Human Services Committee will also suspend the rules when that report is made for item H2. Ordinance 20O10, which amends the City Code, Section 325-6B, which increases the number of artist tents in the farmer's market from seven to 10. Under appoint, no other committee reports. Under appointments, the Electric Franchise Negotiating Team is being recommended by the mayor, Joel Friedman, who is Chair of the Energy Commission, William Bill Siegfried, Vice Chair of the Energy Commission, Alderman Ann Rainey, and Alderman Don Wilson. Madam Mayor, that is the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman John Baptiste, could, we have an Administration and Public Works report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
No report, all right. Alderman Wynn, Planning and Development.
Madam Mayor, I'm the new chairman there.
I thought it was Alderman.
Sorry, not on my chart. Alderman Rainey.
You didn't get the memo, I know.
I did not get the memo.
Madam Mayor, because this is, this is frozen custard season, and in recognition of a new business coming to Evanston known as Andy's Frozen Custard, on behalf of the committee, I move to suspend the rules.
Could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I move, I move adoption of the special use for a type-two restaurant 719 Church Street known as Andy's Frozen Custard.
All right, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
That concludes your report, Alderman Holmes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't get my mouth down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move Ordinance 20-O10, amending the City Code Sections 3-25-6B, increasing the number of artist tents in the farmer's market from seven into 10.
Second.
Oh, I thought I suspended them after. No, I said, I thought I would do them after. You introduced it, okay, well, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, city clerk, could we have a roll?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. The rules are suspended.
Okay, then I move approval.
Yes. City clerk, you're going to win a record of speed at this.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
That concludes your report, Alderman Holmes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't get my mouth down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move Ordinance 20-O10, amending the City Code Sections 3-25-6B, increasing the number of artist tents in the farmer's market from seven into 10.
Second.
Oh, I thought I suspended them after. No, I said, I thought I would do them after. You introduced it, okay, well, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, city clerk, could we have a roll?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. The rules are suspended.
Okay, then I move approval.
Yes. City clerk, you're going to win a record of speed at this.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
That concludes your report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Call of the wards, Alderman John Baptiste.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think it was about a week ago, at the Human Services Committee meeting, we had an issue that came up as we reviewed the police reports. And one of the issues was a charge that was brought by a police officer against a man who, when he raised his, when he was asked to raise his hands, I guess, two, by the officer in terms of his security check, this man's pants fell off and revealed his naked body, so he was charged with public nudity. So, we had some discussions, but, and it, that discussion that we had excited the responses from one of our aldermen around the issue of whether or not we were being unfair to the police officer for charging the individual with nudity as the charge that sort of brought this individual before justice, or that, you know, apparently there was a prior reason why the officer stopped this individual, but the only charge that was levied against this individual, as I recall it, was public nudity. But I'm really talking about that to introduce a particular point that I think is real important. As a result of the discussion, we asked, I had made a reference to our city attorney to look into what our definition of nudity is. What is the ordinance? What are the rules that govern that whole issue? Because I want to try to go somewhere with that, and this is to the general public and to the youth at large. I think we have to begin to look at how we behave ourselves in the society, and we have, as a government, we have to begin to speak on how our youth are caring themselves and behaving. And so, I ask for the clarification in order to get that definition, and I will be advocating for some kind of review of whatever our rules and regulations are, so that we have, we empower ourselves to be able to speak, comment, and deter the kind of cultural trend that seems to characterize young men, particularly black young men at this particular point in time, but I see the Hispanic, I see the white youth, young men doing the same thing, that the notion of running around with your pants all the way down to your knees is something that is not proper, in my opinion. And so, when do we begin to speak on that? Do we only speak on that in our families? Do we only speak on that when a neighbor give us permission to speak to his or her child? Or do we have, should we not leverage our position to begin to proactively fight for some standards in terms of behavior? Just as we fight for standards in terms of non-criminal behavior in the community or behavior that is, that is proper, when, even when it is not criminal, that we do not violate other people's space, that we do not go downtown and grab stuff from, from the tables as people sit down to dine? I think we have to begin to talk about other standards, and one of them I want to pursue is the notion of, of how we might be able to regulate nudity, how we can expand the regulation so that people are not allowed to walk around showing their butts and showing their underwears and all kinds of stuff. That's my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to see if I can get through this without coughing, Jag. I have three things. I, Evanston lost a wonderful, true Evanston citizen last week. Winifred Farbman passed away, and for those of you who may not have known Winnie personally, anyone who drove down Hinman Avenue knew her garden. She lived at the corner of Hinman and Hamilton, and it was an extraordinary garden. One of Winnie's goals was to have something that bloomed every single month, and there was a year when she had snowdrops bloom in January. But more than that, she was so much of what we really treasure here in Evanston. Professionally, she was a geographer. She went to University of Chicago in the '50s. She was also a textile expert. She spun anything into yarn and then was incredibly creative. She even spun her own golden retriever's hair into yarn and created her own dog sweater, and she loved either thrilling people or creeping them out with that when they found out. Winnie and I originally started off on opposite sides of an issue, but she ultimately came, I think, to probably 10 or 15 of my town hall meetings. I would frequently ask for her thoughts and wise counsel on issues that were going on here at the council. She led this unbelievably creative, thoughtful, adventurous life, and unfortunately, she lost her battle with cancer last week, and at her memorial, we all learned just how much richer a person she was by hearing each other's stories. So, my condolences go to her friends, to her family, and to her friends and to our entire community. My second two issues are slightly, on a much lighter note, I want to congratulate the varsity lacrosse team at ETHS because before tonight, they played Glenbrook South tonight, so I don't know what happened, they were rated number two in the state, and that's pretty good for lacrosse here. And then, second, I'm just going to, Madam Mayor, take a point of personal privilege, and I will send the minutes to my parents, but I want to congratulate my parents on a 60th wedding anniversary, which is coming up this Friday, April 16th, and we're going to be having a very big family celebration between one set of college exams and the AP exam, so, in May. But congratulations, Mom and Dad, and I hope I can just only follow in your footsteps. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I wanted to specifically acknowledge my own appreciation and perhaps all of Evanston's appreciation for the work that the Northwestern students did on the report that was included in the materials we received. Zachary Sizon, Jessica Conkey, Elon Seaband, and Kyle Simonson, and I apologize for any of the names that I've mispronounced, but I think this is reflective of the kinds of, hopefully, future types of, I realize this wasn't a collaboration, but it ultimately wound up becoming somewhat of a collaboration because of the information that they'd prepared, and hopefully, we can get more of that with Northwestern University. And the weather's turning, I want to remind everybody to be particularly alert to pedestrians and bicycles on the road, and also remember our cellphone, our handheld cellphone ban. If I was able to write tickets, I think I'd be putting a dent in the budget deficit even just today. So, be mindful of that and proceed with caution, as I had to evade the not further specified red vehicle that almost rear-ended me today as I watched him on his cellphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Somebody who had to say a colorful life is putting it mildly, and that is Tom Fuller, former Evanston resident who, at one, at one election, he, he ended up being the president of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. And during one election, he, he garnered more votes in Cook County than any other single black politician in history. So that was very impressive. But the reason I loved him is because he gave me my first job at Evanston, and that was at Neighbors at Work. And he was the president of the SITA Board of Directors at that time, and so I just wanted to mention that he passed.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
I too want to thank the Citizens for Greener Evanston and Carolyn Colley for their work on the wind turbine information and all of their other work on the Climate Action Plan. I also wanted to send out another thank you to Bonnie Wilson. Her report was amazing of just giving us, as Alderman Rainey said numerous times, we knew there was a problem, we just didn't know how far. And I think in the very short time that she's been in office, Bonnie Wilson has clearly taken the helm and is turning things around, which will help not only the City of Evanston government, but also the City of Evanston residents. So thank you again to Bonnie Wilson and Darnell, which I can't remember his last name now. Also, I wanted to put out a call to Ninth Ward residents. If people want to be neighborhood watch captains, volunteers want to start neighborhood watches, please send me an email. Reggie Napier of the Police Department is working with residents to start more neighborhood watches, and with the warm weather coming, we definitely need more. And also litter, litter is a big issue, and please pick it up if you see it, put it in the garbage cans, it's a huge problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. That concludes call of the wards, and we do not have an executive session. Thank you, Alderman John Baptiste. City clerk.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Holmes.
Yes.
Alderman Tindham.
Yes.
Alderman Grover.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, I move adoption of the special use for a type-two restaurant, 719 Church Street, known as Andy's Frozen Custard.
Second. All right, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. The rules are suspended.
Okay, then I move approval.
City clerk, you're, you're gonna win a record of speed at this.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.